All right, I just called this meeting to order and I wanted to start by thanking Mayor Thurston Martin and the City Council, the board, administrators. Yeah, it's exciting, we don't do this every day, right? So, well, let's not do it every day. Maybe every other day.
Every other day.
Thank you, of course, for enabling this, asking me to. Absolutely. Thank you for your time and that was part of the conversation. I was gonna give a little context, Jim, I don't know if you want to start as well, but I think it's exciting because I think we all probably have common objectives, right? I mean, our students' needs and our staff's needs, but I know we have common objectives, I think, supporting public education. And we certainly have a common objective to support our neighborhood and our neighborhood schools. And I'll just start with that, Jim, if you want to. Just hang on, you pick us up, otherwise.
Well, let's speak for about 15 seconds. We strongly desire to keep the MAND project on schedule. We fully support the district's need to ensure equitable facilities throughout the district. But we also want to ensure that the renovations are compatible with the site's and the neighborhood's historical building context. So I'm confident we can come to mutually satisfactory agreement about that.
Exactly, sounds good. And, you know, and the first topic is the facilities master plan. And, you know, we are specifically in a talk MAND, so I always like to remind everybody when we turn this into a talking facilities master plan, you know, it's about transforming the learning environment, right? And it's about delivering a 21st century learning environment. And, just as Jim just said, it's also about having an equitable learning environment, no matter what school you go to, no matter what your postal code is, we expect all of our schools, all of our classrooms to have a transformative learning environment. And we wanted to have a conversation with you all on MAND specifically. You know, I think one thing for us tonight, given this is like a school board, you know, city council meeting, we probably need to stay at a relatively high level from policy or, you know, looking at, you know, design elements or boundary conditions at our level. Maybe give a few examples of that. First, getting into the details of the design, which we will do at some point. Tonight is probably, you know, what are the boundary conditions or what do we want to either, you know, include or exclude, you know, moving forward. I'll just give you a couple of examples of, you know, things that have maybe been discussed and things I've heard, you know. It's, you know, we look at the area around MAND, Fairchild is the street. Some of the options tonight, you'll notice, closed Fairchild, or it's not there anymore. Is that something we're willing to entertain or not? There's been some preliminary discussions on that. Some of the options look at, you know, acquiring properties to the south of MAND. You know, are there any constraints or concerns or, you know, requirements as we think about that? There's probably more talk about the red house because it's a historic event, and you guys can get into details, but, you know, I mean, there's more talk about some of them. Are we willing to share, come to a sharing agreement on the park? It's a historical, you know, conversation with the city council who's normally been willingness to talk about the park. Those are probably the things we need to talk about. Maybe there's others. But if we can agree what's in scope or not in scope, then, you know, we can take the next step in design. We won't spend time on what, you know, it's a waste of time because Ryan didn't consider, we can roll out some options. I think the district's interested in, you know, what options can we move forward? And, you know, as we always do, as you go into design, we want to get community engagement and get people involved and get you involved. And tonight isn't to like pick the option, it's like to kind of narrow it down in terms of what are the boundary conditions around things like that that we either be willing to entertain or not entertain.
Any questions on that? I would say, Chris, one of the boundary conditions has to do with the mix of on and off-street parking in terms of the site itself.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've heard, we have common objectives, too. I think we understand, you know, we've heard from the MAND community, we understand this is an urban school, it's not suburban school. We understand it's going to be different, that's okay. I think where we, you know, we just need to have an equitable learning environment. So when the kids go into the classroom, when they go into school, that part of it should be equitable with everybody else. Other things may look different, that's okay. Markings do look different, I think we know that, that's okay. But absolutely, I don't know whether there's any strong boundary conditions or is it just design included or whatever. All right, probably enough from me. Steve, you want to take it from there?
Sure. You have a set of slides in front of you, I'm gonna walk through that, especially for the benefit of people that are out in the audience. And I'm gonna start real quickly though, just with the end in mind, so when we get to the end, you're gonna see a series of options out there. What we tried to do was we tried to take all the building blocks and put them together in different configurations so that we can think about them. So it's not that this option versus this option versus that option, it's, okay, as Chris said, Fairchild closed, not closed, this property in, out, this, this piece of soft play structure in the park, not in the park type of thing. So we try, it's certainly not every iteration that we could put together, but we put hopefully enough of them together so that that helps start the conversation. I know when talking to Jeff, one of the things that he said would help would be to have some visual depictions, so if you get some aerials in there, what does it look like when you lay those pieces over the top of each other? So that's what we tried to do. So before we get to that, just share some information with you and some visuals so that we know what it is that we're referring to. So this is a MAND elementary school. Here's the way it sits on the property, so you can see the park over here, well, it's kind of covered by this tree, here's Fairchild coming in here, our school here. This is the Prusel Performance Hall over here for your orientation.
Steve, can I say something about?
Yeah.
The blue line marks the district's property?
Yes.
So I think it's a surprise to many people probably to see that the district actually owns part of what appears to be North Market Square Park.
Sure, so right down here is what he's referring to, so you'll see as you come into some other slides, this blue and this red border is carried through. It's a little bit difficult to see out here, but this is actually a fence line. And so this green space out here, which as you said, has an appearance visually to be part of North Market Square, that's actually part of the district property that comes down just to the north side of that sidewalk there. Again, here's your blue and your red line, our district property, here's North Market Square. This is the Goose Town Historic Area, so there's been some conversation about that, so we thought it might be helpful to see where that particular conservation district lies and how that wraps around MAND Elementary School.
So on that point, it's important to note that the three houses south of Fairchild are inside.
Yes, they are in the Goose Town Conservation District.
Conservation District.
Yes.
The 630 Fairchild building, the red house, is not.
Correct.
It's a local historic.
Right, it's right across the street, and again, that Goose Town line runs right through the middle of the road there. So we went back to the original adequacy report that BLDD Architecture did for the district back in July of 2013. One of the things that they did was they did an educational adequacy score for each of the schools. They ranged from 60.6 to 96.2, MANDs was a 60.8. Some of the concerns that they addressed are things that won't be a surprise to anybody, things like the ADA accessibility, the lack of an elevator. I know Julie Robinson's in the audience with us and can attest to the incredibly small size of the administrative office, the counseling office, et cetera. Parking, we know that's an issue, that was one of the things that they cited. Public access to some of those areas that normally people have access to in other schools like the media center. And then, of course, the playground space, both the softball and the hard escape playground. Some of the things that, as we look at options to remedy some of those issues, obviously we've been talking about whether or not it's feasible to consider acquiring adjacent properties, whether there's the option to extend some of that softball play space into North Market Square Park. As Chris alluded to earlier, the interior learning space, things that we would like to see in terms of gymnasium, media center, and restrooms, some of the big changes that we would like to see in terms of upgrades to the building itself. As you're looking at it, again, to put some visual markers into your memory as you're going to look at it, this is district softball play area. Here's North Market Square, we'll see another picture of this in a minute, but this is City of Iowa City softball playing, so you can see where that falls in relation. One of the things that we did note was that the city has an abundance of swings and is certainly appreciated by the kids and more so than we find in some of our other schools. We thought it might be helpful, I know this one's really hard to read, you have it in your packet, but from a visual depiction standpoint, we thought it might just be helpful to give you a sea of reference to where some of the other schools are at. And one of the ones that people might find surprising is Schimmett, but you have to keep in mind that what you see when you're on the property is not necessarily the size of the property itself, because we have quite a bit of wooded area that's part of the Schimmett campus. You can see Alexander Elementary School here. One of the things is we've had the opportunity to purchase acreage for campuses, the 15-ish acres has been a target for us as we're looking at acquiring new elementary sites. The building footprint is a percentage of the site, that is, when you consider the acreage, how big is the building itself? You can see quite a bit of variability here. So you see a building like Longfellow, which is a three-story elementary school, obviously takes up a much smaller portion of the property. You look at a school like Lincoln or Hoover, single-story facilities, and so obviously they're gonna take up a larger footprint on the property itself. MAND is up here at 1867 as a percentage, simply because the acreage on the campus is so small. We took a look at the play spaces that were available for students. We refer to those soft skate, the softball areas, we looked at those play structures. We also talked about hard escapes, so think about blacktop, think about basketball, foursquare, things like that. So those would be the difference between the soft and the hard. And then, green spaces, those would be just what they say they are, that's areas that are grassed, that provide students' opportunities for play.
Steve, did those calculations for MAND include?
They do not.
The existing play areas within the historic park?
They include the existing play areas, but they do not include the park.
Right, so this is absent the park.
Parking stalls, and again, when you look at this, it's not necessarily aligned to the size of the campus. So we've got some schools that, based on the terrain, think about Lincoln Elementary School, the campus with the parking lot down below. Obviously, Alexander, with the larger acreage, allowed us to provide more parking out there. There's also obviously no street parking out near Alexander, so we knew they have all of those off-street. We've been talking about properties, so just from a visual for you, so these, this is the duplex, 618 and 620 Fairchild Street, 630 Fairchild Street. And again, as the mayor mentioned earlier, these two properties are across the street from and not included in the Goose Town Historic District. This property, though, is on the National Historic Register, so that is another issue that's separate from that. 623, 619, these are owned by the church and are in the Goose Town District. 4.7, on Fairchild, the front's Dodge Street, and this is a private owner. I'm gonna walk through these really quickly because, again, these were simply an opportunity for us to look in aerials what some of the footprints might look like. We presume that was better lucked for you as a council board dialogue, but we tried to plug together quite a few different iterations. As you look through this, a couple of things that you'll note, we wanted to share with you some of the acreage and square footage over here. You're gonna see when I move into the next one that if there's a need to add property in order to make that particular plan work, we've got those listed. So this is our current site. So here is MAND, this is hard escape play area, staff parking. This area up here is actually where we run the buses through right now, so that's our bus pickup, drop-off. Down here, these are the existing houses that we just took a look at. This is that area the mayor mentioned earlier where the fence runs across here, so part of the school district property, but visually, a simple extension of North Market Square Park. I think some people are unaware, where my cursor goes, this piece right here, there's some limited staff parking on the end of the property here. One of the things that you'll note, if you look at the property, if you're standing in North Market Square and look at the property, there's a significant change in the grade of the property, so there's a pretty significant drop-off as you move from the building out to the park. So that's something that we need to take into consideration as we're thinking. It may create some opportunities for us, as Dwayne was talking to us about it, we might be able to lower the gym, which allows us to maintain some daylight windows on upper stories by taking advantage of the change in that grade. So that could be an advantage for us as we look at options. So what we did was, again, we started, much like President Lynch said, we started inside, and so what we said, what do we need as the basic attributes to make sure that we bring the internal learning spaces up to that adequacy level that we're looking at as we compare it across the district? So one of the things that you're gonna see consistently across the models is a 10,000-square-foot addition. It's gonna move a little bit in some of these, we tried moving it up and down. There's not a lot of opportunity for us to be too creative in how it fits onto the building, but you're gonna see most of these areas of addition are gonna fall between kind of this area down here, so you're gonna see some of it might be shifted a little bit further south on a couple of the occasions, but for the most part, you're gonna see it out here on the left-hand side. So just a reminder, as you're looking at it, this is Prusel over here, here's North Market Square here, this is current existing MAND here. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on these, but I'd be more than happy to answer questions as you walk through. I'll just point out a couple of the issues that we looked at as we considered how we might plug and play on some of these options. This one was an attempt to try to create more onsite parking. We know through some extensive conversation with mayor and city manager and others at City Hall that there are perhaps some opportunities for us to explore off-street parking. So here's one option. Move down to option B. Now we look at it from the same perspective, let's maintain Fairchild Street, not touch that. This next one here, can we maintain the red house on the corner, still leave Fairchild intact? In this case, left Fairchild, move the parent drop-off and put more parking on the north side. Here, the red house stays. Again, you see the addition shifted slightly south on here. In this case, kept Fairchild, split parking. Here, we'll go soft play down the south side, hard play on the north side, very limited staff parking up here, with our bus, parent drop-off down to the south side here. All right, I want to do those really quick, I'm happy to go back and show you any of those, but we know that the meeting, I'm sure there's people in the conversation, so questions that we can answer for you before you wind up your own conversation.
So all the options you showed were our educational objectives.
They all meet, again, I'm just gonna walk through them and you can see how, on each of those, the proposed 10,000-square-foot building addition stays the same. It might move up or down a little bit, but again, we tried to take advantage of the grade, we tried to take advantage of where there are areas without windows right now on the facility, so we're not blocking something off. So you're gonna see that that's consistent throughout, so that allows us to maximize the interior learning environment for the kids. So essentially, what we wind up then having a conversation about is what's going on outside.
So C and E, are there any downsides that you'd want to?
Uh, downsides to C and E? I don't know if there's upsides, downsides to each of these as you look at them, probably the thing that we struggle with the most is trying to balance the amount of soft play surface, the softball surface for kids, you want a hard surface play area for kids, and then what do we do with parking? So that's our, that's our conundrum outside, is balancing parking and then the hard and softball play area.
The reason I use that is that both, or Fairchild open, take the red house where it is, parking becomes a way.
A downside, Steve, is that we had to extend that driveway that exists on the south side of the building down to the south to Fairchild. So it does take some of the site away.
Yeah, if you look at, oops, on C and E, so here's C and there's E, and one of the things that we struggled with was putting blacktop on the campus, because obviously when we include any blacktop in the area that we've got traffic moving, that takes away from softball and hard surface play area for kids.
As opposed to F, if you show them that, we got rid of that, put a parent drop-off, and even that configuration could save the red house.
I think, yeah. Was there one that had that? Yeah. Yeah, so these, if you look at those two, there's no, there's no drive-through there, so we moved the parent drop-off out on the Fairchild. So the parking up here, so if you wanted to come and park and come in with your kids, you'd have to park up here and then walk over.
Like Steve, yeah, I guess, so it's just something we have to work around.
So Steve, for me, there are three major topics that we just, hoping not to get into something here, but one is the shared use of the park.
Mm-hmm.
And what that implies for your need for soft space. Because we can adapt, we can adjust some things within the park, and I think it'd be nice if we could come to a good shared use agreement that enables, you know, mutually satisfactory shared use. The second has to do with the mix of on-street and off-street parking. And I know you've communicated with Jeff about this, he has some ideas. We know of some spots where some diagonal or maybe a little parking could be put and you know, and so on.
Right.
We want to get as much, I think, off the site as we can, and yet, knowing that people need to be close to the school.
Sure.
And the third has to do, and this is the most difficult, but it has to do with preservation of the historic landmark, the red house, and the houses on the south side of Fairchild, which are in the MAND Goose Town Conservation District. And so there are legal regulatory processes and so on associated with those buildings.
Right.
They can't just be evaporated.
Right.
So I think being clear about those three elements at least, like just mentioning crucial.
And E'd be a good one for you to take a quick look at, because that addresses all of those, in the sense that where it says softball play area here, this is one where we would want to work with you as the city to say, we would like to come into the park and work with you as partners to build a play structure. So that would look, because we've been displacing the one that I showed you earlier.
Yeah, the one on the west side, the one.
This one. So we're displacing that one when you look at E. So if we want to build something like that in the park as partners, that's the kind of thing that we would want to put here where we say softball play area. And so we would want to work with you how we could collaborate to build something like that in that corner of the park. This one obviously preserves the house here, the houses here, this one does impact the duplex, the blue one that's right here. In this case, we've got the parent drop-off here, and we can, we're looking at ADA parking here, entrance, the zero entrance to the building here, so we don't have the handicap challenges that we have right now. It does include, where's my cursor, there we go, it does include some space for parking up here, and we've got our full 10,000 square feet of building space on this one. So that addresses several of those issues that you just mentioned. Like I said, the one downfall for us is, is, you know, we put this in here, but that obviously, adding that blacktop to the campus then detracts from our ability to maintain green space, so we're not, that's one of the challenges for us when you talk about upsides and downsides to it.
So our council, you know, has not had an opportunity to really discuss this, so I'm sure individual council members have perspectives or questions they want to ask or get into the mix. So let's make sure people have an opportunity to do that.
I guess for me, the question that I have is, I agree with the mayor, is that I would like to stay on schedule. So first of all, I do appreciate you reaching out to us so we can give you the feedback and we can engage in this conversation. So what is your sense in terms of how much time are we gonna have to get that citizen feedback? Because I also wanted to, you know, get the feedback of the neighborhood as well. What sort of timeframe are we looking at?
So probably our biggest challenge with timeframe is construction season. So what we always want to do is we want to be ready to go in March of the year that we want to start construction. Now, we know we can't do anything till June, the students let out, but literally, June 1st, like for instance, this here at Longfellow, we're gonna be ready to go on June 1st.
Okay.
So we then back down from June 1st, and so if you think about that, what staging needs to be done in March when the ground thaws and drains, and so we want to be ready to go then. So then we backed up behind that, say, when do we need to have the engineering and the site work done, when do we need to have the architectural drawings done, when do we need to do the bid work as part of that process? So we back into that. So realistically, from that standpoint, we want to be at a point where we're ready to award contracts in the fall.
Okay.
So that we're ready to go in March. So then, one of the challenges that that presents for Craig and Dwayne is that we have very few people that are in from June until September, June, July, and August, there aren't a lot of folks in. So one of the things that we do internally is we like to work with staff to get input in the design process, so then we're backed up into that next year working on that. So for us, that's this fall.
Okay.
So for us, if we know what the footprint of the ground looks like, and we know what the footprint of the building looks like, the addition on the ground, then that allows us to work with the design team to say, here are the parameters, so that when they come in and work with the staff, that they have a pretty good sense of where does the addition fit on the property, what are the kinds of things that we need to take into consideration. So when they do the internal work, how do the classrooms layout, what do those things look like, what is the input we need from the teachers and the staff that live in the building, so we can do that right away in the fall.
So are we looking at June or July in terms of, or would it be the fall in terms of this conversation, in terms of the feedback? I guess that's what I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Oh, I turned to Craig and Dwayne, but I'm gonna say, we'd like to, we'd like to have a pretty firm sense of where we're going when we come back in the fall and our staff are ready.
Late summer is probably when we.
So there's a little bit of time here, yeah, okay.
We'd like to be able to start in the spring, maybe late summer of next year, because we like.
We'll want to engage our faculty and our staff, our support staff, when they come in in the fall as part of that interactive design process.
Okay.
That's a good question. Do we have any sense on what the parish churches and what's always, or what they must always thoughts are on this?
Craig's had some conversation with them, I don't know if, I don't know if a conversation with the father wasn't necessarily a conversation with the parish, maybe like, share with the disciples.
As far as the church is concerned?
It's present property.
They, they expressed a desire to be a partner with the school, but I haven't, I haven't followed up with any specifics since that initial conversation.
Other council members have questions to ask or suggestions to make?
How many parking spaces do you need for staff?
We looked at it and ideally, you know, if we're gonna come for all the faculty and all the staff that are there, parents, ADA, et cetera, we're in the 50 to 60 neighborhood, and if you look at that compared to where we're at with other facilities, you'll find some that are a little higher, some that are a little lower, but that essentially affords us the opportunity to ensure that if there are, if there's access to 50 or 60 parking spaces, that gives us the ability to ensure that both faculty and visitors have room to park. Now, in conversations with Jeff and others at City Hall, we talked about the mix of that as onsite and off-street as options. I think Jeff did runs, did you remember Jeff, was it up to 50 slots?
Sixty, yeah.
Was it up to 60?
Up to sixty, sixty what? Sixty spaces.
And that was the idea that we had no onsite parking, we did all off-street parking, or all on-street parking, no off-street parking.
Correct.
Would that be a mix of the community and staff and balcony, or just 60 in general or is it 60?
We wanted to get an idea for just the physical space that 60 spaces take, so we knew, okay, you're talking about a three-block walk or a four-block walk at that 60th space. And currently, a lot of those spaces are used by the community, so we'd have to have the discussion whether we continue to intermix those and realize that it's not really 60 spaces you need, you only need 100 because you're in a community what school needs, or do we look to actually sign spaces that are for exclusive use by the school district during school hours?
Is it possible then to utilize it all, the church, to partner with the church and utilize their parking hall?
There, right now, they've got, there's lease for the hospital.
Oh.
So there, they've got hospital staff park there. Now, and again, when Jeff has came to the runs, they did it as if we had no parking onsite, so one of the conversations is, is there a mix? So in this case, we've got 34 slots onsite, so now we know what we need off, or on-street, let me get those mixed up, on-street, so we could do 34 off-street, 26 on-street type of thing. So we did 60, because I think Jeff did it, was it like four different models?
I think three.
Yeah, three different models. And it was really to get an idea from a linear feat. If you go just straight down church, how far do you go? What if you go a little north, a little south? So it's more of a square type of thing, so we did a few different runs on it.
Do you foresee any issues with adding the, because it's in all the option, the bus drop-off lane on Dodge Street?
No, we're, our staff's had some preliminary conversations with the DOT and they seem willing to work with us on that.
So you didn't see that, sorry, I kind of went over that. That's right up here on this one, so that would allow the buses to enter from the north, pull up here, so I think the bus, I think it's on the right side, so they pull up here.
I think that's a good example of the city and the district having.
I think that's a good example of the city and the district having some positive conversations and helping us with solutions. So I got to about the fifth alternative, and I said, oh, look at that, the bus drop is there. And then I went back over the others, and oh, it's there.
Sorry, I went right over that.
Oh, it's good, great to see that.
There's a city bus stop right there, too. That could be good as well.
Well, and that's what I was thinking, is that just coming into town every morning on that route, there's always people waiting at that bus stop, always. And the bus has to stop on Highway 1, which is that street. It'd be nice to have that.
So it seems like E is all of, is C viable? Is that something we want to take to the public, the staff? C, what's your point?
Yep.
The building preserves the Red House.
But I noticed in some of these that you have the parking lots, relative to the existing church parking lot, that fly in that way.
That was part of the conversation with the parish, was if we are looking at their property, they would like to extend parking, and so what Terry's talking about is down here.
Correct.
Where the parking lots would actually connect.
Yeah, but that keeps the Red House, but allows for more parking.
Steve, one concern on option E, maybe, I don't know, one of the educators can think. But when I look at that one, so you have soft play is separate from hard play. As far as playground supervision, would that be?
These are kind of mix and match. We plugged them in more so in some cases to get an idea for our footage. So literally, Craig and Wayne and I were working on this yesterday, and then one of the models were like, wait a minute, we don't like that flow of the play, and so we moved a couple of them around. So I think one of the things to take into consideration when you look at this is, if you want to have all the hard play on the north side of the property, you could just switch, you know, you've got 80, 100 square feet here, 76 here, so you can think about these as someone being mix and match as we put them together. So in some of them, like this one, for instance, we try to stay away from North Market Square Park, so there's nothing over here, we didn't, there's no request for us to come into the park. We're using this space down here, which would be south of the fence line, but we didn't come into the park itself. So I think there's a lot of flexibility on that. Paul, we were looking for how much of the soft and the hard play scape do we want, and where can we put it?
Well, all options split, right?
Pardon me?
All options split.
Um, actually, we started down, oops, down here, we put them all together, so that was one of the ones where.
All soft play area.
Yeah, so we put all soft play.
The play areas are split and all.
Yes, because of the way, well, here, I knew there was one. So in this case, we've got the parking on the north side, and we've got the place spaces that are.
They're all split.
Yeah, the north place.
So when you look at option E, just, do you, I mean, do you consider that, I guess I'm looking at the harder play space, I mean, do you consider that adequate to be really equitable with your other schools? I mean, I look at like two versus E, one you're looking at almost 15,000 square feet, and the other one you're looking at less than 6,000 square feet.
No, it's less. You know, when we looked at this, we said the first thing we wanted to do was we wanted to address the interior learning spaces, which is why you see the consistency in the proposed size of the addition. And then we made some compromises as we went through each of these and started plugging pieces together. So for instance, here, you know, this is one, again, where we'd have to reach out to the city for some support and.
That's why I'd be interested. E-mail, the objective with C was okay. I mean, let's go get input on that. Because I agree, I agree.
I guess, and I'm no educator, that's for sure, but I mean, more stuff, I just read anecdotes and stuff about the importance of kids getting out and playing and how that helps them learn, and you can't just have them sitting in classrooms all day. And in Iowa, you get wet, muddy weather, you know, whatever, and you can't have them out on the soft ground. So are these kids then trapped in school because we don't have enough hard play space for most of the kids to get out, or you've got to trade things off? So I guess when I look at that, when I look at E, and I look at how small that hard surface is, and I realize that, you know, that means trade-offs in terms of those houses along the south side of Fairchild, I think those are things, from the city perspective, we have to be considering as well, not just the fact that those houses are in that conservation district, but the importance of this school really having that equitable learning environment and play environment because of how important it is as an anchor to that learning environment.
If you look.
And that balance.
Let me interrupt. But if you look at that spreadsheet, and it, well, maybe we should send them a bigger version, I just didn't see it. But the hard space averaged of those nine facilities that we listed run from 9,000 to 21,000 square feet, just in hard space. So this is really so far, when you look at.
But you're using that as an absolute figure instead of per capita, per student?
Well, some of these, yeah, Schimick has 9,000 feet and the same number of students as Mann. So 9,000 at a minimum would equal what we have at Schimick.
Okay, fair enough, and that's a direct.
And that's a per-square-foot basis.
But it's important also to think about the existing park and how the existing park is currently used.
Right.
By the students and teachers at Mann.
Exactly.
And there's a basketball court there, that's hard play space.
And it's, if, it is 1.4 acres, and if you put that into the site acreage of it, it's equal to, it's essentially equal to Lincoln. It goes from, what is it, 1.6 or something, or over three acres. So yes, I want to thank the city for the joint use of that park, and there's also just limited park opportunities for kids living in that part of town, and it's important that going forward, since we're both facing limited resources, that we pull and make sure that, you know, it's the best play area and park area for everyone to utilize.
It's been joint use for a very long.
Right, and I don't get any perception from you guys that you're going to deny us, so.
So you could show one, C and G.
And maybe one other thing to point out, is we tried to do this as minimally intrusive on North Market as we could, and if there are conversations about working cooperatively to upgrade softball play areas, I'm sure that, you know, with what is here right now, if you wanted to upgrade that, I'm sure we could work with you on how that might work and potentially expand some of that softball play area, too. We just didn't want to keep the footprint small when we looked at North Market Square.
So G?
Oh, G, sorry.
They all sounded like years ago.
So this was one, and I do think, in my mind, there are all these different moving parts, and so it's hard to say, well, where do we start here? But I found this one an interesting place to start in that, you know, with respect to the park, it's left alone. I happened to walk through there earlier today when the kids were out playing. They were using the entire park. The supervisor, I spoke with the supervisor, she said she was thrilled with the way the park worked, that, you know, it's really kind of four quadrants, and the northeast quadrant, the open space there, that's a really valuable multi-use space for those, the kids that play soccer there, and also for the neighborhood, you know, when school is in session.
And it's a green space that's really.
Yeah, it's a really valuable space. So this scheme, some of its strengths for me is that the park is left alone, we leave all the historic, well, one major change with this scheme would be leaving the Red House, so that soft play area, you know, in the corner would be, we'd leave the Red House. And my reasoning, my thinking on that is, if you do include the park in this discussion, there's 1.4 acres of hardscape, softscape, and green space in the park. So it seems to me that 7,000 square feet of soft play, which we would lose, isn't so significant that it would fundamentally alter the equity of the building. But I would say that the soft play area to the west of it, where the duplex is, makes a lot of sense, and it was kind of reinforced by the area supervisor. She mentioned that the use of the park as kind of open free play is not open to kids from cadus through second grade. They are kind of restricted to the hardscape area. So with that in mind, it seems that the soft play area next to the historic property could be developed as a K through, and this may be a little bit more detailed, but I think it sort of speaks to adjacency issues. If that were developed for K through 2, that would address that existing concern we have that, you know, the younger kids don't have access to the park. And also, it would be, I think, a compatible adjacency to the historic property.
So you made the one in the middle.
The one in the middle.
The 6,265 square foot.
The other advantage of G in my mind is that rather than sort of splitting hard and softscape programming, they're all consolidated, so you have, you know, at the top, you have 11,000 square feet of hard play. And one of the strengths of the existing scheme is that you have continuous outdoor space. It's not broken up into smaller pieces, and I think from a play standpoint, that's important. One of the concerns I have with that building location, which is constant in all of our schemes, is that it splits the play area. You know, the current scheme, there is a more kind of unified feel for the kids moving from soft to hardscape to the park. The building, as it's shown, and I realize this is diagrammatic, results in kind of a very narrow passageway from the north end to the south, from the hardscape, hard play area to the soft play area. I think that poses some surveillance issues. You need more than one staff person out there in order to monitor the situation. So I'm just going to throw out an idea, I know everything, you know, with respect to the building, that's where the building goes. But I would ask that you might consider flipping the, where the building is with the hard play area and then parking area at the top, so that the buildings, then Prusel, the proposed building and the existing building, would frame the hard play area and move it away from Church Street, so it wasn't right up against the street there. And you would then have a kind of unified effect again with the open space there.
The key to that for everybody is the location of the gym, is it the north end of that proposed addition? And just to the right of that, you see where that existing building bumps out, that's where the multipurpose room is. So I think what we tried to accomplish was to get those two spaces adjacent to each other, because they'll work with each other in the building, how it functions. As far as what's to the south half of that addition, you could flip that 180 degrees as long as the gym stayed in relationship to the multipurpose room. So everything that's to the south where it says proposed, Stephen, that part, you could, in theory, flip that to the north and create an entrance on the north side with the parking lot and move the hardscape down. So that's a really good idea, as long as the gym can stay next to the multipurpose room.
One thing that, you know, somewhere between G, E, and C, with E and C being the ones that preserve the Red, the Red House.
Yeah.
One thing that, it is important to pay attention to parking simply, not just because of during the day, when it comes to teacher parking, but also the fact that the new Mann boundaries in 2019 stretch all the way to First Avenue, North First Avenue, which is basically all the developments north of Rochester, up First Avenue. There's a significant, I'm putting on the west side of First Avenue, right, considering that when you have full students, excuse me, full school events, you know, you have a significant number of people who aren't walkable, where traditionally we think of Mann as a very, very walkable, just for the north side neighborhood. You've got parts of the non-north side neighborhood who are coming in there, including the area of North Seventh Avenue, Woodside, sorry, Woodbridge, Windsor, that area up by Hickory Hill, I think it butts Hickory Hill Park into part of the Mann territory. So we do need to think a little bit about parking in here. It's not going to be as easy for those events when people come to park and maybe teaching.
Although it is losing the peninsula, too.
Correct.
Losing the peninsula, you know, the new areas are sort of partially offset, at least by the fact that the peninsula would no longer be part of the territory under the plan that it is. In other words, neither one of those is really walkable, peninsula versus.
So I'm going to try to summarize again. I'm just trying to be what I heard. So C and E would be okay to move forward, and what can aspects of G, design elements of G that keep the play area together or continue to serve?
C and E?
C and E kept the Red House.
Right, but you have, one of the issues with both of those is that loop road around the Red House, with the parking, you know, there's a five-stall parking and the loop. You know, isolating that residence with, you know, basically completely surrounding it with asphalt seems really problematic to me. And I think we can address the problem, the parent drop-off and parking in some other fashion than that. I mean, it seemed to me that the resolution in G, where if you needed parent drop-off.
That was the other design, I mean, the continuous play area and track everyone through.
The loop, to me, you know, would you want to live in that house? It seems to me it's just a difficult.
It's a question at some point, although, you know, yeah, do we all not know what to do?
Hasn't been any talk about moving to the Red House? We located the Red House, not being.
Yeah, what I think Terry, what I understand is that in order to move that house, first of all, it cannot be demolished. Secondly, if it's going to be moved, it would have to get the approval, as I understand it, of the state and a federal agency as well. And it's not clear that it physically can be moved.
Well, that's.
Because of the break, basically, that it's meltdown. That's the way I understand it.
The answer would fit in a timeline or like.
Zero.
And then it may not even be feasible.
Well, I guess, I would comment that there's a lot that I really like about E. I mean, I know that there's already been some conversations that you've had with the city, and as I see this, I like the joint use element, you know, continuing that relationship. I like the historic preservation. I'm sorry, E. E. The fact that the Red House is preserved, the parking is going to be an issue. I think it represents a meaningful compromise. And I think coupled that with the off-street parking, I think that's a really good concept as well as G. So I think, it seems like to me if there was a consensus, at least on E and G, to maybe move forward with the public, and then to get the public's weigh-in on that, those seem to me to be two pretty workable proposals. But we're trying to address.
You mean G as modified by John?
Yeah, yeah. And so those are narrowing it down to two, get the public's feedback on that, and we're trying to deal with a lot of variables. You know, there's a lot of moving pieces on this, and I think E and G, with John's modification, represent a meaningful attempt to address some of those variables.
Let me say a word about E.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, listen, those three houses south of Fairchild are left alone.
Yep.
If they are removed, that would require, first of all, them being removed from the conservation district. That would take legislative action, so if there'd be historic preservation commission action, then city council action. I think, I don't know if we talked about this today, but I think that might require supermajority vote on the part of the city council. You know, check, depends on the historic preservation.
Well, depends on if neighboring property owners object, or if the plan of zoning commission were to recommend denial, then it could trigger.
So it's a tricky, very legal question.
I have a question. Does soft play imply that there would be a play structure there?
That's what softball is, yeah, and I was trying to make sure I defined that. So softball is like a play structure, hard play is like basketball, of course, where, and then green space would be, like we were looking at here.
Okay, so something that concerns me about everything, well, I don't have to be honest right here, but to me, it seems important, I don't know if the PE classes at Mann are using that open space, but if there is no open green space there, to me, that is really a tragedy. I feel like there needs to be, for kids to pick up soccer and tag and, you know, there's a creativity piece there that is really going to be missing if all they have is structures.
They currently use it a lot. That open space.
The PE as well.
Probably the kids want to play in the strip mall.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like that there's the play element before, after school, summertime, recess, but then also the education element of PE, of not being able to do some of the organized things that they do in PE classes. There's no open green space.
And Laurie, that's what G does. G takes that heat drive off and pushes the play space back on the school property.
Right, so for me, that's. Right. For me, that, that's an educationally very important piece, because kids need that creativity piece. But the problem with G is it's not realistic that you're gonna get rid of that Red House.
Oh, the Red House could stay with G.
Right, but then, yeah, but then you lose about seven thousand square feet of playing space.
So there's a proposal to move forward with E and G, put the asterisk on G that it's got on the Red House.
That seems to be mine.
Being everyone suggesting it, we lose parking significantly now. Because if we take from ten thousand square foot and we flip it and put it the other way, and then move the hard surface down, we've cut into parking lot.
I think if you're going out and talking to the community, I think you need to get feedback from the community on those three houses south of Fairchild and what do they think about that? What does the broader community think about those three houses that are part of that, that are in the Conservation District? And how would they feel about the city changing the boundaries on that Conservation District with the idea that that could result in those houses being taken down? That would be a very tough decision for the city to do that unless we hear from the community that that really is an important thing that they see, they're, they're willing to do that as a trade-off.
I can see what I'm trying to drive that conversation. So you try this again. Move forward. Just gonna keep going. C, E, and G, with asterisk on G, the Red House has to be there. And they all have design elements. We're like, this is a problem right here. It's gonna be some scenario that's not here, right?
Right.
Well, that's H.
It's gonna be some future scenario. We, and, you know, we'll get more people.
Double it.
Sorry, I was focusing on E and G. What's C again?
C preserves the Red House.
But C takes out those three houses south of Fairchild.
What about the parking adjacent to Horace Mann?
But Jim, I think we need public input on that. I don't think, I don't think the school board or C houses would sit here without public input.
Yes.
And make the decision that we are going to limit parking so much on that site that makes it very difficult for parents and even staff to maybe effectively use that building. Now, that may be the conclusion we all come to, and that's fine. But a lot of people around this table have talked a lot about the importance of public input. And so I really think that needs to be on the table as the district and/or the council is out getting community input, is that combination of C, E, and G and, and that discussion of, you know, what does that mean in terms of moving that Conservation District boundary? And we may get loud feedback that says, no way, that we put that in, that's important, we wanna keep it, we wanna keep those houses, we'll somehow figure out the parking the other way. And they come back different. I think we all need to have that input as we try to move forward.
I'm not gonna disagree with that point, Susan. I don't want to draw attention to the number of parking stalls. In option C, there are fifty-one, currently are twenty-three. Can you go to G? No, eighteen. So that's a decrease in what's currently there. And then the E, whatever, yeah, so E is thirty-nine. So there's an increase of sixteen more areas. And we've also talked about having off-street, I mean, on-street parking, maybe same, on-street parking near schools. So that has to be taken into account.
You know, just as a thought experiment, again, thinking about what public input we could get.
Are these all cost the same?
Ten thousand square feet.
They cost roughly the same?
Not negotiable.
More or less.
But we do have gyms at elementary school in our district that are four thousand or smaller, and that we have no plans to make larger. And schools with larger enrollments demand. And so I don't know what that would mean to go from five thousand roughly to more closer to four thousand at the gym. I wouldn't prefer that if everything else was held equal, but if you're talking about sacrifices elsewhere in terms of outdoor play space or even parking, you might hear some opinions about that.
Yeah, let's get a little more. I think I've read somewhere that you had sort of a standard gym size, but in terms of equity, you can cut it by ten percent and still be thought of as equitable. So.
And part, just so you know what our, our thought construct was as we went through it is, and I go back to something Frank Kirshman said about the bond in nineteen sixteen to build this building. And so we thought to ourselves, okay, if this renovation is gonna last a hundred years, let's make sure we do the right things with the building, recognizing that there's probably more flexibility outside, whether it's parking, hard skate play area, soft skate play area, green space, that if something were to change later, that would be much easier to change than doing something with the building. So that's why you see the consistency of the addition throughout there. As we said, if we're going to do a hundred-year change to the building, what would we want that to look like? So that's why it's consistent throughout.
Although with Kirkwood, I mean, we're putting an addition on that building, but we're not making that gym any bigger. It's under four thousand. Corville Central, doesn't anything come in?
Four hundred and thirty students.
Under four thousand.
In terms of cost for each of these options, any, okay. But they're not all neutral. They're not all the same in terms of different out, or is it negligible? It's just too early to say.
Position changes, right?
Yeah, okay.
So, so are we okay?
Yes.
Quick parking question.
Adjacent parking lot, what about the Ace Hardware parking lot? Um, we talked to them. Jeff, I don't know if you've got anything to add to that. We had a conversation about spaces and availability and long-term access. So I don't think it was off-the-table kind of thing, but I don't think there was a long-term commitment to it.
Yeah, that's fair. You just, I wouldn't count on that, those spaces for, you know, in perpetuity for as long as this building is gonna stand, the nature of that property that it could be developed in five, ten, fifteen years. I'd hate for you to bank on that park being there long-term, because I think it probably will.
Yeah, I like that C, G, and E, and that I think to Susan's point, let the public weigh in. Those are meaningful choices for people. And obviously, we're gonna still maintain our own point of view, but.
Chris, what are the way on earth that, that school design is the? So C, G, and E, that's a sort of three factors.
Maybe it's a mistress, all like, you know, they try to take something important to C, G, and E.
Yeah.
But three factors associated, all, I think, in every, in each of those cases, the Red House would remain. Secondly, in every case, there'd be some kind of shared use agreement between the city and the school.
Yep, I agree with that.
North Market Square. And in all three cases, there'd be some kind of mix of on-street and on-site parking.
In all three cases, consider the duplex as part of the campus.
Yeah.
And all three, consider Fairchild remaining.
Yep.
Do we currently have a shared use agreement yet to cities? No, it's just informing.
The other piece I would just add as a point would be, try to strive to get the outdoor spaces fully integrated so we don't end up with an isolated.
Gym, let the entry and office space out in the north side.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
All right, this is good. We should do this more often.
Making progress.
I was hoping things they would get in the vape themselves.
Yeah. He's gonna agree that he's disagreeing, right?
Maybe the next time he could get in the vape themselves. Anything else on this topic? I do want to thank everyone.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Want to thank Jeff and, you know, the administrative teams who are working well together to do the resolution. Can you touch on the other topic as well?
Be a geo bond.
Yes. Any else on this topic, otherwise we're over. Are you gonna do geo bond?
You can probably cover it because I might have to leave this to touch earlier.
All right. Geez, man, put pressure on me.
Oh, I can do it.
Go for it. Get the leave, I'll take over.
You can do it, Paul.
You start talking, I'm loaded.
Are there any other time constraints? I mean, you guys have a meeting at Saturday, right?
I believe about a half hour.
I think most people are assuming we're gonna spend about an hour. So we'll try to do this as quick as we can, but we'll take our time.
I'm gonna run through our geo bond slideshow here that we are presenting to some of the PTAs and PTOs out there. And I'll go pretty quickly, because a lot of you guys know a lot of the history of this. We do have all the buildings that I'm showing you here in the district. We are at twenty-six, I mean, twenty-nine of this building. Twenty-nine buildings in the district that go across not only Iver City, Corville, University Heights, Hills, North Liberty. So we are truly one district. It covers all of that land. Back in two thousand thirteen, we had twenty community representatives come together in a steering committee to address the district's growth and how everyone maintained the old schools as well as build new schools. These were all members that came together to form that steering committee. Put in, Michelle Pan was the representative from the City Council of Iver City at that time. So the twenty community representatives, they had six steering committee meetings, three community visiting workshops to get community input, four community master planning workshops. Now, one of those workshops at the Hotel Metro, they had over four hundred committee, or community members come together. So we had about, pretty kind of close to, I would say, a thousand people that participated in this process to get public input. So if you're looking for public input on man, be ready, because they'll give it to you, which is great. So we had a lot of minds come together for that. That took one year. We got, we took research, we took public input, we did project prior, prior project prioritization to come up with a facility master plan that we currently have. It's a ten-year plan. So that ten-year plan was approved in two thousand thirteen by the school board. In two thousand fifteen, they came back and updated the plans, included some athletics that weren't, wasn't on the original plan, as well as taking in the new projections that we had gotten for a moment. In October, we went back out to the community again, and we used Thought Exchange to get more community input. That's our online tool. We had over seventeen hundred unique individuals participate in that. That means there was seventeen hundred people, not seventeen hundred pole wrestlers, you know, sitting at their computer every day. They gave over, what was it, twenty-five hundred unique ideas in that process. So we took that information, along with some of our new enrollment protections. And we updated the facility master plan this year in January. And that's the one that we will look to present to the community on September twelfth for the bond vote. Facility master plan really delivers for us. It provides air conditioning. It has the goal of eliminating temporary classrooms. We're looking to add some dedicated music and art rooms, additional rooms for flexibility that can use for spaces like preschool or special education improvements, athletic improvements to not only our high schools but our junior highs, as well as getting down to the elementary schools when you add some multipurpose gymnasiums on there. The ability to get to a twenty-first century classrooms, again, with that flexibility, historic renovations like we've talked about today, multipurpose rooms, who I mentioned, and continuing and finishing up our security and safety upgrades. The total cost for the facility master plan for the ten-year plan, which is pretty unique that not a lot of districts have a ten-year plan, is three hundred and forty-seven million dollars. What we've already done and what's in progress is a hundred and fifty-five million dollars. That's been paid for with save and pebble funds, saves the one-second sales tax. And what we have left that we've known from the get-go is that we're gonna have to go out for a bond, and that's the hundred and ninety-two million dollars. So, big number, but I want you to remember that number as I go through these slides. Again, air conditioning is a big, big thing. Speaking specifically of Horace Mann, it's a three-story building. It gets super hot on not only the first floor, but even hotter on the second floor and even hotter on the third floor. Really, limits are, kind of, we can be in there in the hot days. So by two thousand nineteen, we'll be a hundred percent air-conditioned in the elementary schools. Two thousand twenty will be a hundred percent air-conditioned in the junior high schools. And two thousand and twenty-one will be a hundred percent air-conditioned in the high schools. So with the passage of the bond in the next four years, we'll hopefully eliminate the need to have early dismissals and really utilize the full day. We have a goal of eliminating temporary classrooms. For those of you who don't know or haven't seen them, this is an example of what the temporary classrooms look like. The picture on the left there, your right if you're looking at, is current temporary, inside of a temporary building at Leving. And that's a sixth grade classroom in there. So that's one of the spaces that I've talked about. You're, when you put kids out there, when they're outside, they've gotta go in and out for the restroom, in and out in the cold for all their specials. It just takes away from classroom learning time. And you're stuck with a very small space that's tight and you can't really do a lot, there's not a lot of flexibility there. I should mention, when we started this process in two thousand thirteen, with that steering committee, that was twenty-seven percent of our learning was taking place in temporary buildings. If we don't pass the bond with our continuing growth, we're looking at about forty percent of our students will be in temporary classrooms. Hopefully, the passage of the bond, our goal, like I said, is to get to zero students out there. Dedicated art and music rooms. So I think, Jim, I think you've probably seen this. This is Mark Twain after they had went through their renovation. These two rooms are next to their multipurpose room that they also got, which I'll show you later. But this is great because one, this room, this space here on the, on this side is the art room. Sometimes we've done, and Amy can probably tell you, art in a cart, which you took your art supplies and you put them on this cart and you wheeled them into the classroom. And that was the new art thing for the time. This space really allows art to thrive. And also, the same thing on the music side over here. Art and music, sometimes it'd be the first two classrooms that would get put out in the temporary space. So now to have dedicated spaces and to really invest in the arts in a time when, when maybe the state and federal are taking away from the arts, I think it's good for our district to say, we're investing in these, it is important to us. Like I mentioned, additional rooms and flexibility. One thing we would really like to expand on is our space that we have for preschool. That's important to us. We know that preschool is one of the leading things for, for kids, that they need that. And we've talked about that a lot, to be successful in school. I put, there's a picture over here, this is a space at Grant Wood where they actually have interventions or one-to-one type of things, or teaching with small groups. And the blue, the blue section in the middle there, that's a temporary wall, as a lot of calls. You have two classrooms where you can get on the space because, like I said, there's some extra spaces in there. Twenty-first century classrooms. The two pictures on the ends, these are pictures that are happening right now at Lucas Elementary. Those are action-based learning classrooms. Probably looks completely different to anything that any of us went to school from. Look, Stephen, Amy, feel free to jump in on why that's good. Now, kids learn in different ways, these kids are being active. I know my daughter at school, she often requests the pedals that go under her desk because she likes to use the tablet movement. So there's a set of bicycle pedals.
Yeah, it's just engaging in the brain research that says, if you have the kids engaged in learning at the same time, they're more likely to remember.
This picture in the middle is actually a picture when I went to school on Sherry School Day at Southeast Junior High. And one of the neat things about this is all the students are using their Chromebooks right now in this picture. It's a language arts class. They were, they had written a story, and they had to go to each different student. One student had to do spell check, one student had to do, look at and make sure all the sentences were correct. But the space, again, they're using their own space. They found, you know, some students around the floor was more comfortable with sitting in their desk at that time. This is an example of some twenty-first century learning going on, where the kids are interacting and teaching one another. The student, the teacher is acting as a coach, she's not in this picture, but, you know, she would come around to the groups and be able to move to the groups instead of lecturing to you all, or to the students like I'm doing now. So I'm just gonna touch on athletic improvements that tie kind of the three high schools together, because there's a lot of things going on in the high schools, but these are three of the things. This picture here is at West High. It's kind of hard to see that from there, but we had pretty much like a giant canyon run through here. On the tennis courts, it was a safety issue. A lot of teams actually refused to come to play tennis against West High, the state champion, West High. On these courts, we just finished doing the new courts, which I think added two courts as well, so we're up to eight, right? So boys and girls can practice at the same time, as opposed to we had six courts over here, and that became a practice issue. This isn't the only thing that's going on at West High. This summer, we'll be also going in and spending the cafeteria, the kitchen, redoing the practice gym. That's in the backside, if you've been there, it's the smaller gym. Moving on to City High, so take a lot of pride in City High, because that's where I went to school at. But the interesting thing here is this is the new gym. The new gym was built in nineteen eighty-four. By the time I was there, I went through the nineties, ninety to ninety-four, we still call it the new gym. We still call it the new gym, but it was starting to show that it was too small. When we had assemblies, all school assemblies, we could fill both sides of the bleachers like this. This is a current picture from last year, I believe. Their student population has grown since I was there, when we were just over a thousand, twelve hundred, somewhere in there. Now you're up to seventeen hundred roughly. So now that we're doing all student assembly, now that we do fill the bleachers on both sides, you're almost halfway to the middle of the floor with students standing as well. Thankfully, I don't think you see here, the fire marshal doesn't see this one. And also, another great example here is the game against West High last year. This is a common thing that happens when we have big rivalry games like that. We fill up both sides of the seating, and then you have in the old gym, there's a couple TVs, look like this, so you pay to get in. You go to the old gym and watch the activity that's happening in the gym right next door because you can't get in on the TV. So just some size space issues there. We're also looking to do the, expand the media center and cafeteria in City High, has a couple of the other projects there. And then at Liberty, everything in this kind of the purple or reddish-brown color, that's what's going to be opening this fall. All of the athletics facilities you see here, this is going to be phase two, so they won't open with athletic facilities on the outside. And then the purple right there, that's the five-hundred student addition that will come in phase three, will make that school go from a thousand to fifteen hundred students. So just to go back and tie it, Weston City High, so if you were familiar, West High opened in sixty-nine. It also did not have an onsite football field, soccer field, track, or auditorium, which in this picture is over here. We, West High got a football field and a track in the mid-nineties. They got a soccer field in two thousand and twelve. They got an auditorium shortly after the football field. So it took us roughly, if I do the math right, it's about fifty-three years to complete West High. And if we put the passage of the geo bond and the completion of the facility master plan, we can complete Liberty High in five years. So have a nice, just kind of a picture of the football field, what it would look like. Be able to complete that in five years versus fifty years is something I think we should strive to do. Historical renovations like we talked about, this is actually Longfellow. That will start this fall, June first. Just use the calendar out, we'll start doing that. Multipurpose spaces, again, the picture on this side, this is Lemming. This is all day, this is a during-the-day all-school assembly where the parents are invited. So you have all the kids that come in, they're on the floor, performers are up here in the front, and then if you're one of the lucky fifty parents, you get to stand around the side. If you're not, you go out the door and back to your car, because there's no space. So this, this is the smaller gym. It's what, similar to what Twain used to have. This is Twain's new gym. As you can see now, you can put students on the floor, space for activities, tons of space for parents. You also eliminate, this space is used for not only gym class, but cafeteria. When you go to the new spaces where we have both, the multipurpose room, the gym space can be used for gym, then you have a dedicated cafeteria space. I know at Lemming, one of the things they have, they have one, I know, at least one child, that's the reality, is they have to go and clean that before they do cafeteria, before they go lunchroom and after lunchroom, and that really cuts into the time that you can actually use it for the gym class. Safety and security upgrades. So I have, I'll have to look at my notes, but the interesting thing on this is, this is Lucas, which is undergoing a renovation right now. This is Twain's indoor space, and I think it was, look, I think it was thirteen of the nineteen buildings when they first started this did not have secure entryways. And you wouldn't think of that in today's world, but if you, this space here at Lucas, this used to be the art room up here in the front, and the office was in the back. And one thing that, if you're familiar, I'll use Lemming as an example, before they put in their safety entrance, which you have to go into the library or the office now, you can walk into the school, and the office was to the left, you actually had to turn left before they could see you, or you could turn right and have access to all of the students, except for kindergarten. The same way at Schimmick right now, I think, is when you walk in, the first room to your left is the kindergarten room, and then you get to the office. So there, what we're doing is we're kind of flipping those spaces, we're making it safe and secure, so you have to actually go in to the office or have the office see you before you come into the building, so that there's that part of it, again, security for our students and safety. Timeline, I'll just cover this very quickly. It is a ten-year plan, we started in two thousand thirteen. Everything here in this section in green has been done. That's, all those projects have already been completed. The ones in red are what we're doing right now. And then everything in blue is bond-dependent. So that's twenty projects at roughly eighteen buildings that still need to happen. I just want to cover the tactic again. So, we covered this before, three hundred and forty-seven million, and we need a hundred and ninety-two million left. So just throwing a fun fact here, for Long Island City. So those twenty projects, that's going to cost us a hundred and ninety-two million. And then we built this beautiful new building, Hancher, right? Used three times a week, costs a hundred and seventy-six million, so just to give you an idea. Hundred and seventy-six million for this beautiful arts entertainment building, a hundred and ninety-two million to get twenty projects that we need to do done. We're currently the fifth-largest district in the state, and we have the lowest property tents of the ten largest districts. If you just want to look at that compared to some of our neighboring school districts, you can see we're down towards the bottom of this one as well. Clear Creek, right next door, the tax rate's sixteen seventy-five, sold in sixteen twelve. West Branch, we just tried to pass the bond to raise theirs another two dollars. They're fourteen thirteen. We're thirteen ninety-nine, so our taxes are towards the bottom. So apparently, if we pass the bond, the full levy rate required to pay the principal and interest on this bond would be a dollar ninety-six, but we have retiring debt coming off this year, so that'll take fifty-three cents off of that right away. So without that, or after that retired debt, it's a dollar forty-three. Feel free to jump in, since we have the financial map, but did I say something wrong here? The board discussionary levy reduction to reduce impact on taxpayers would be forty-five cents. We've done a very good job of building up our reserves there to help that. So the proposed levy rate increase that we're looking at after the passing of the bond would be ninety-eight cents. And that's per thousand-dollar assessed home valuation. So if you're trying to do the math in your head, you're thinking, what's that going to cost me? Well, after all your rollbacks and everything that happens, you're at true assessed home. If it's a hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at four dollars and twenty-five cents a month, or fifty-one dollars on the year. So everyone can do that now. Had hopefully a hundred, two hundred thousand, whatever your house is. And just to show you where that compares, in two thousand and ten, our tax rate was just shy of fifteen. We knew the number off the top of your head, fourteen something.
It was fourteen sixty-nine, there you go.
And we've done a good job over the last few years, actually, that tax rate has gone down. With the passage of the bond, the peak will put us back up at fourteen ninety-eight, right? Fourteen ninety-eight.
It's a nomination, just under fifteen.
Just under fifteen. And then as years go, our tax, the impact will actually go down, and we will be within, what is it, can't remember the year, we'll be even to where we are now.
Fifteen years will be broken even. Based on property value, it's going to grow.
So I ran through that pretty quick. This is all on our website now, so if you guys want to go out there, it's pretty nice. It has timeline, if you have, if you want to look at individual sheets on what's getting improved. For example, if you pull up man, it will list man, has a picture of man on the one side, and on the other side, it has the schools that they feed into. So even if you're a fifth-grade parent of man, and you're like, ah, man, I'll be done there, it'll show you what's happening in Southeast and at City High as well, so, so pretty, everything, pretty much every document you want to see is on that's on our site now, or we done the site.
So of course, we appreciate your support.
Well, some conversation should take place. Yeah. It's great to see the debt levy, the levy being dropped to, what'd you say, ninety-five?
I need to say, you know, property value keeps going down. We strategically planned, you know, the debt to expire at the same time as we're adding debt, so there's a number of things we've strategically planned, and now we're trying to keep that as most possible, so we're sensitive to that. The other thing I would just add, though, I think, you know, construction inflation and interest rate inflation is one of the biggest, you know, concerns. So, you know, we left, we could go through all the frequently asked questions, but, you know, what if it failed? Will you wait a year? Well, construction inflation, you know, three to five percent is, that'd be five to nine million dollars right there. A half-point interest rates, if they go up, is like eleven million dollars, so if you want to wait a year, and I think interest rates going up, they're not going down, if you wait a year, it could, it could be a risk of twenty million dollars. So I, we've talked about since the beginning of time, construction inflation is the biggest rest of this whole thing. The faster we do it, the better. And exploding the lower interest rates right now, well, this is a great deal for us, so it's just another way to keep the, you know, tax burden going forward. So yeah, it's exciting. Any further questions on this topic? I know you guys, this is just your first, this is the first live you're giving tonight, so.
Yeah. Any questions from our council folks?
Thank you very much.
I probably need to do motion adjournment, right? Yeah. And entertain a motion adjournment, so we'll, 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 we'll just vote it. We're all voting, I think. Is there a second?
Second.
Rocky, you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
That's my question.
Me, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.